Yep.
All right, I'll call this special time regular meeting of the local council to order. Ready, what's your name?
At what notice of this meeting has been provided by a notice mail to the Hope Valley News and the Chaplain Times posted on a bulletin board in Borough Hall and filed with our clerk if required by law.
Do the roll call, or I'm sorry, flag slowly. Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Fuller?
Yeah.
Here.
Mr. Mackey?
Here.
Ms. Steeler?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
So I will say she is here, but we haven't moved her to the right zoom yet. She's in executive session room, so I'll just confirm that she's there.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Okay, I with probably great disappointment to one member of public here. First, I'll just say, Steve, thank you. Steve is our OEM coordinator and he stopped by a little early so we can finally get them sworn in technically. Much appreciated for all you do. And unfortunately, our first two hours of the meeting will be behind closed doors for some personnel issues. So I will take the motion to enter executive session. For the reasons on the agenda, I think. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You're Steve. Thank you so much. Closing door. I'm going to call this meeting of the council back to order. Sorry. Thank you for Liz. But we are resuming the public portion of our meeting here a little after seven o'clock. Council opened the meeting at five o'clock for executive session for personnel issues and interviews. And now we're back on our agenda at item five. Next items, our report of our public works and director water sewer that were in our package. If anyone has a questions on those for administration, that would be a good time. Alright, thank you. Next, item seven. At all of our meetings, we try to have a consistent time for updates on the sale of our water system. The big ones here are our upcoming information session. This was rescheduled originally, but now it will be the 31st, so three weeks from tonight. We are preparing a mailing to remind people of it. There'll be some more emails on our list reminding people that it'll be here zoom and in person. We've also the two recent state milestones for the potential sale, but the review of our debt defeasance plan has been completed by the state and they've approved it. And the approval of the contract form by the Board of Public Utilities, if I have that right, Lisa, thank you, has also been completed. So our next action item will be later tonight. We will have the second reading and public hearing on the ordinance that will advance the public question to the ballot in November. So we'll be doing that this evening. And then the next item from our perspective is the next in our series of information sessions on the 31st. We were able to, you know, we had some requests from the community and we were able to have New Jersey American Water Watch to be here at that next meeting and available to answer questions as well. At that point, so site to have in there and available for community to ask questions directly as well. In addition to the presentation of the water committee will be made. David, any?
Well, just maybe quickly. So I think that the main issue that we'll be looking at in the next outreach is the last one, we were looking at analysis of rates sort of retroactively for the last 15 years in New Jersey American and Hopewell. This one will be looking forward. This one will be where we're looking at our capital needs for the next decade. Have to potentially bond for to make those capital needs, what the impacts would likely be on our rates. But we'll also be looking at what the impact of the potential sale would be on the borough finances overall in terms of defeating the borough's debt and what those implications are. And I think maybe some discussion of just what some of the borough's capital needs are outside of the utility and what the what the implications of that would be, because I think it's it's quite substantial for the town. And that's that's an aspect of this that we really haven't talked about yet. So anyway, that's just my little.
We've got two discussion items we put in our packet before we get to public comment. Doug, you want to maybe just do a brief intro that we can kind of talk through? It's just an opportunity for us to as a group, give our administration some direction on a few items. So Doug?
Okay, yeah. Our ordinance for brush pickup does not have a schedule in it. And basically what we're doing is we're picking up brush on a daily basis, either bags or brush. And our public works department basically spends quite a bit of time in that function. So what we'd like to do is at least then update the ordinance and come up with a more workable schedule, you know, heavy in the spring, heavy in the fall. But in the summertime, you know, most towns that I'm familiar with, they have about two weeks in the spring and two weeks in the fall. We can go further than that. You know, more pickups, but I think we really, really need to get to that because basically our DPW is picking up brush and cutting downs. We don't do things like rebuild storm basins anymore. We outsource all those things. And I think it would be I think our employees would enjoy it more if they were doing diverse activities and, you know, maybe better use of their skill set and also, you know, save the borough some funds in that regard. So let's take a look at that. And again, you know, I still have a couple more weeks, so I'll talk to Lisa about that and we'll get that started. Possible cooling center. We've had another request to build a cooling center. One of the issues we have here is we don't have a generator. So that kind of that really hurts us as far as being able to provide any reliable place to come, you know, during storms and, you know, the hot weather and everything. So I don't think that's really workable for us at this.
From a capital perspective, is that something we've ever explored needing or implementing? Not so much the cooling center part of it, but you know, to have a space to have it.
No, I haven't. I haven't looked into generator for the whole building generator. I have not. I don't know the cost of that and everything.
Could we have a cooling, I mean, a cooling center without a generator only if, I mean, because if if you have a cooling center for a heat wave, there's a good chance you have power. Is there? Is there a problem with with if if there's a power outage, then this is not, I think, because I had a member of the green team was asking about it. And I think that at least the person that was talking to me was just interested in opening up the Borough Hall when it was during the heat wave.
So yeah, so the logistics problem with that would be, you know, what hours would we run? We have offices upstairs.
Right.
So it would basically be limited to this room. So those are some of some of the limitations.
The elevator, right?
I'm sorry?
There was the access control issue.
We can't isolate the second floor.
Right.
Oh, is that okay?
Yeah. They have to change some of the doors.
Right.
But just, you know, we'd be limited in space, that's for sure.
Right. Yeah.
So those are some of the some of the concerns.
And the library, University of Kentucky library has is a designated cooling center by the title?
The township.
Yeah, I wonder if we might find if there's another building in town like a church or something that we could talk about.
We explored this a little bit last year. I didn't get into the generator. To your point, you could have it without a generator, but I think it's better to have a generator. If you're going to be offering a service like that, but I think it was $13,000 for the upgrade.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't, I can't say.
Our elevator is pretty antiquated and.
Yeah, I wonder if that's something we can coordinate a bit with OEM and maybe senior services, because there are, you know, ways that don't really come across my feed very often, but you know, they, there are some in the area and there is transportation for some senior programming available. I wonder if just maybe a first step is to better coordinate what resources are available and advertisement.
And yeah, and maybe like a church, because I feel like there are people, I mean, I think a lot of us, most of us have air conditioning, but you know, for those who don't, so.
Man enough to.
Yeah.
Mostly keep my house there.
I guess I was, when I said about the generators, thinking about past experiences when we used to open up our firehouse. Because we had a generator there and when the town was out of power, it was a good place for people to come, charge their phones, any medical devices they had, things like that. It wasn't so much for cooling.
And we've been lucky that there haven't been deaths around. I just mean, that's, you know, in summer, high heat events are peak energy times too. So I mean, we've, I think we've been maybe lucky or not used to having that be a problem.
But the generator is something, I mean, I think we've had discussions over the years. I mean, for example, the New Sandy, you know, whether that's something that we want for this just as a central communication point, you know, when on some level have emergency generation of this building to provide power functions when there's, when they're in fact.
It's a shared service to explore with our fire commissioner being on, that if their building is is has a generator or perhaps a building in town should maybe use that one to collaborate on. So with that, we'll go into our public comment section. I'll note that there'll, we have two general comment sections, one now and one at the end of meeting after our liaison reports. We also have be a little confusing. We have, I'm going to say two public hearings on ordinances. There's three listed, but two of them are grease trap ordinances. So we will have a public hearing on the updated grease trap ordinance that we introduced more recently. We technically then, if that were to proceed, we have to then kind of torpedo the original ordinance that still sticks around that we both know.
I thought we were.
But they both.
Nine oh one and nine oh two?
Yes, the ballot question.
That's about.
The revenue stream, I thought.
Yeah, I thought we had.
I think you voted it down.
Yes, I thought we voted it down.
I think you voted it down.
Yeah. Because I thought we had voted it down before introducing this one was.
Well, I'm sorry, you know, my apologies. It was the right explanation, but the wrong ordinance. It's the two ballot question. As Meatloaf said, two out of three ink bad. But no, sorry, we have. So we're all, we did, we did torpedo the other grease trap ordinance with a public hearing on the new one that we worked, Doug and everyone worked on with our business community. And then while it looks like there are two hearings on the ballot question, we really will take action to nuke the original one. And the one that's on the website would be the one for the public. So with apologies for confusing everyone. I'll open up the meeting for public comment. We'll take comments first from members of the public attending in person, then from members of the public attending via Zoom. Initial comments will be listened to five minutes. We cannot always respond or take action on any public comment issue, but we'll do our best if it's possible. If you are on Zoom, please push the raise hand button and we will recognize you after people in person. So if you're here in person, like Tyler, come up to the front.
Thank you. Ooh, red light, green light. You love it. Charles Scott at Morehouse, 20s Prospect, Hope Valley. I have, I originally had four items. Now I have five items.
Okay.
The firehouse is absolutely set up for a cooling center. We've got tons of air conditioning. We've got an emergency generator. We've got, we're going to have bunks. We're going to have cops. We have shirts. We have change of clothing because we learned from when we had that flood that we, people came to us and we were all set for it. We're now, we're all set for it. We weren't all set for it and we are all set for them. Item number two, but was originally my one. I wanted to personally thank Doug for his very good work for the borough. I know it's your last meeting and I will certainly, or I certainly appreciate your work. And I wanted to personally thank you and you have done a great job as far as I can tell. And I do thank you. On August 5th, so we posted this on the website on August 5th. I would recommend that as many as can possibly go, this is the police department and all emergency services groups opportunity to get out in front of us and you can all talk to them, touch them, leave them hamburgers, hot dogs and all kinds of good stuff. I recommend that you do this.
Yeah. Where is it?
Sorry, I'll make sure this here.
Last night, we approved a resolution to go out for a question on the ballot for the purchase of a new ambulance. The question will should be on the ballot. It is going to be a request to spend $380,000, sorry to leave, for a new ambulance that will replace our 28-year-old ambulance. It's straightforward. We obviously don't, we're not planning on spending that money, all of it, but that's the idea. So the last item, and this is an agenda item, but I just wanted to put forward a question. David and Doug, I sent you that question that I have in my mind. So if you know about the question and you can answer the question, which is whether we're going to be mandated to remediate both well four and five, even if we sell the system or only have to remediate if we keep the system.
Right. So the situation is if we keep the system, we would obviously put in treatment systems on both lots four and six. That would be under the grant that we've been awarded. If we sell the system, we're not obligated to do that. If we sell the system, New Jersey American has to basically make sure that they're in compliance with the rules in terms of PFOs. Their short-term proposal or their answer to that is they would switch off well number four temporarily, open up the interconnection. They said they can supply all of our needs from the interconnection directly. So that's that they basically do as of closing. So that means that we're fully in compliance. Then they're doing a comprehensive engineering evaluation of the whole system. Everything which includes both wells and an assessment of whether they actually would need to utilize those wells in the future or not. And, you know, they weren't able to complete that at this point. I think they're leaning toward probably closing at least, probably not reactivating wells, number six and maybe number four, but we don't know. So if they decide that they're not going to use those wells, they would abandon the wells at their expense. They would remove all the useful equipment and they would return the well houses back to the borough at no cost. And those are part of the assets are being sold. Obviously, if they keep the wells in place, then they would be required to treat them if they're going to put them back online. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Bye.
Hello.
Hello.
I'd like to thank Doug as well. Oh, June, try.
He also should be on Zoom as well.
Oh, yeah, I logged in because I was eating dinner. And yeah, but Tom and I would also like to thank, like, we appreciate it. I've been with you, I agree. Okay, so a year ago, we've got the consultant's report on the assessment of the water system as well as notification of you initiating the WIPUP process. And about a year ago, August 2nd, you had the grant approval from the New Jersey DPP. What is the status of the grant? I had asked about that in May. And so I'm still curious why, you know, what's going on with the grant and how would we know? How would we find that out? You know, through the information that's shared by the borough about the status of the grant.
Status does not change. We are still waiting for the DEP to issue a grant agreement. Trying to remember the last time that I reached out to them, but it was, it was before May. You know, they confirmed that yes, the grant is still there. The money is in the bank. The money is available. Apparently they are developing a new framework or form or system for these grant agreements, which is kind of the same thing that happened in the beginning when we applied for the grant. They were just in the process of putting together their application process. So it seems we're always in front of that. So we're waiting for them. In parallel to that, we're still in negotiations with the DEP on the administrative consentor, which is kind of related to that because if we keep the system under the ACO, that would be the regulatory mechanism that actually requires us to move forward with the actual installation of a treatment system. So that's where it is. The need just there to take another timeline.
Within the last couple of weeks, they did finally give us a draft of the AC of the.
So we're hearing from the from the regulatory, from the legal group of the administrative consentor. And if that's an illustration of the pace of things, and it's not a criticism of the DEP, but our draft to them, I mean, there's been some back and forth on language. It was a
A year.
Year ago. And then they had some changes, I guess, in their legal staff and so on. So it's literally a full year from the time that we gave our draft response to them on the ACO to the time that they responded. They're full of apologies. Excuse me. Now the ball's back in our court. But that's not to divert from the question of the grant agreement, but the two are related. They're tied together because the the ACO sort of acknowledges the whole grant process because without it, we wouldn't be in a position to build the systems. So it's it's complicated. It's June, I know it, it's the next, this is the way the department works. From a practical standpoint, if, you know, you're looking at a two-year process from the time that if they issue a grant agreement and we put out an RFP for planning and design, you're looking at probably at least a year for the planning, design and permitting, and then another year to do another RFP for the construction. So it's a two-year process. We are now within five months of a referendum that will determine whether we're keeping the system or not.
So you're waiting for the referendum to initiate.
We are not driving the process as far as the DEP. We do not get to do anything until we have a grant agreement from the DEP, which they sent to us, which then we have to review and presumably, you know, make sure that we can sign it, that there aren't any terms in there that we have an issue with. That that is their job. They're the ones issuing the grant. They issue the contract. We are not in a position to make demands. I will tell you that we haven't been calling them up every month about it because it just doesn't make sense for us to be pushing the process if we don't know where we're going to go. Because honestly, you know, even though the grant pays for the planning, design and permitting, we still have some expenses and costs upfront to just put out that RFP. So I mean, if it arrives tomorrow, we'll be in a position to respond to it, but.
And in the interim, the focus has been on things like, well, one, our reporting on PFOs thankfully has all remained compliant in the interim, which has been excellent. Two, a lot of the resources that we've put into the system recently, including joining a new cooperative purchasing association for water and sewer and purchasing additional equipment for our well has actually been an excellent investment in additional water that we've gotten from our current well. It's not the same as having a second well, but it's getting surprisingly close to it. So, you know, in our projections of at what point, you know, in the future, which we'll talk about on the 31st in some detail, we stop buying water from New Jersey American. In our scenario where we remediate wells, we have taken other measures to produce more water in the interim and spend less on buying. Unfortunately, though, even when we get to that providing no water scenario, you know, we'll talk about this more. It's not a magic, you know, savings, you know, it's incremental, unfortunately. But but we spent a lot of, you know, time in that interim period doing things like that, which have had significant, I'm just saying, short-term benefits, but our assets to our system that we continue to work on and invest in, and not just the buying and selling of things, but, you know, entering into new arrangements to have more efficient ways of purchasing things. I forgot the name of the cooperative that Doug found, but we're now a member of a purchasing cooperative that gives us access to better pricing for things. We we did it and then that's what it was the.
The safe valley.
And what was it? Was it a pump or no?
Yeah, we got a turbine. We're ordering a turbine pump. Yeah.
Right.
Which is another vertical turbine pump. The other thing is I'll just mention, because it, you know, in the last year, we had some real success on on three fronts, just in terms of costs and one was first replacing the well number four, which increased the output from the well substantially. It's limited. We can only produce up to 100 gallons per minute because of the treatment equipment and it's there right now, can't handle more than that. But that increased the amount of money we can produce from well number four and proportionally decreased what we're buying from New Jersey American. The second thing obviously we've been doing is the leak mitigation, which has been pretty successful. There's certain, I mean, there's, we know there's leakage in the in the reservoir that we can't address because that leak would happen to be replaced. It's just not fixable. And recently, and we're still waiting to see how this plays out in the long term, but for the last four months, Doug, working together with Dave Moisek, made some changes in how the two water sources, the well number four and the interconnection are controlled relative to when they're activated and how the reservoir is filled and so on. We're, we haven't gone through a major drought or anything that would really stress the system to show us how that works under all circumstances, but I will say optimistically, we found a way that it reduces further the amount of water that we're buying from New Jersey American by a substantial amount. Enough that when I saw the next water bill, I called Doug and I said, there must be a mistake because this is not enough money. And and it was very successful. And it's also interestingly enough, reduced the total amount of water coming into the system. So our again, I'm tentative about this because I need to see a few more months, but it's, we're seeing a substantial reduction now in the percentage of unaccounted for water from where it was, you know, a year and a half ago. So we're making progress. And actually, the other thing about that is that we were able to save about $40,000 on water purchases relative to the same time period last year, three month period. It's important because how many leaks have we had to repair this year?
We had a couple of big ones in the beginning.
Yeah. Yeah, and we got a big one. 10 grand a pop.
Yeah, January.
So anyway, it's helping us with our operational costs. It's giving us a little more of a cushion. Anyway, this is not, long term, this doesn't have a lot of impact, but I just want to let you know that it's not as if we're doing nothing and just waiting.
And one more piece, we have implemented and brought in an outside consultant to help with our water staff of one, you know, on regulatory issues. So we have more manpower looking at it. And some of that is, you know, I mean, I think we, Doug and Dave get the credit for some of the recent things, rather than outside consulting, that would make sure that that they, but but in all seriousness, though, we brought in more, a more sustainable level of manpower. You know, we're, this is not us sitting around just assuming that people will all vote yes, will be prepared and talk about the implications on both ways, but we put a lot of effort, particularly in the last couple of months towards things that don't involve selling the water system. Right?
Yeah, that's great, especially considering the situation and the first time that the system was really assessed was a year ago with consultant's report and and then you've rushed into this sale contract.
Well, that's actually, that's.
Whereas the the condition has emerged over many years. And I think it's worth it to give it the time to consider the alternative options here. So related to the DEP grant and the pace of it, are you saying that a year's time is just the standard pace of and and nothing can be done by the borough to express some urgency for for having the grant available?
Let me tell you some examples. We're about a similar period since we were awarded our $1.5 million state roots to school grant. Similar funding mechanisms, federal through state. We have a similar amount of money in pocket from that program, $0.00. We don't have the grant agreement for that either. It is a pace that is not acceptable to us, but unfortunately is common beyond our control and we not that we have to choose our battles, but we are careful in working with our partners that fund us in making sure that we're doing things at respectable a pace that respects their ability to lose interest in funding us or or things of that nature. So I without being more specific, I don't disagree with you. I'm not satisfied with the pace of any of these grants. I'd like to be building, you know, crosswalks and signals with our safe routes to school. Grant. I'd like to have cash in hand, particularly since we spend a lot of time protecting the borough and getting them to agree that the first phases of that, even if we, our community decided to sell the system, we wouldn't be responsible for paying back. So it's, that's not at risk for us. we wouldn't be responsible for paying back. So it's, that's not at risk for us. That's not what drives, you know, there's no delay driver because we've spent a lot of time working with them to confirm that that initial phase of of design, which we could be doing now if they allowed us, is not at at risk to us. And, you know, that's not that that effort was wasted, but very happy that we spent the effort to make sure that could happen. But again, without being more specific about which battles we choose and which, I'm not saying bridges to burn, I don't mean that, right? But, you know, which which panic buttons or nuclear buttons to push. I I just have faith in our professionals in their experience in these types of grants about which things are beyond reasonable or beyond expectations. And particularly as a new program where we're supposed to be kind of the tip of the spear for them developing it, we're not we're neither satisfied nor surprised with with the pace of of so far.
Yeah. And and the other thing to point out is, I mean, so we now have three full years of compliance for a few thoughts. We are not in a situation where there's any urgency to remediate this. If the department thought there was, they would have been pushing it differently. I can guarantee that there are communities across the state that do. Okay. When you look at the actual P F O S numbers for other public systems, which I have, you have systems that are consistently and substantially above the numbers. Some of those are also small systems. It wouldn't surprise me that that's where the efforts are being complimented. Those are the, those are the efforts where they actually have compliance issues. The other things, and we're going to talk about this along the thirty first, so I won't belabor it tonight. But there seems to be a misunderstanding about the role of P F O S treatment and bringing well number six online relative to the financial viability of the system. That is not the cure-all for dealing with our financial issues.
Yeah, I think there's multiple factors, though, that would enable our system to supply water.
We're going to have a much more detailed discussion about what it is that we need to do to continue to supply water on July thirty first, which I would encourage you to attend. Because that's where we're going to go through a ten-year capital plan and our most urgent priorities in the next five years, what the updated engineering estimates for those are, what the implications are for our rates, all of it is going to be here. And then we're also going to connect the dots on that with potentially what the implications are for the financial health of the borough. So all of that is going to be laid out in detail. So I would encourage you and get anybody else in the room you can, many people here as we can get, because that's a story that we really haven't told. I'll also just point out that, you know, you talked about the financial report from a year ago. We started doing our financial and engineering analysis of the system two years ago. So this is not something that we just started. That report was the result of a year of work before it was presented. So it's not something that we just started and that we're rushing into. This has been going on for quite a while. And you'll see the results of this when I do it on the thirty first, so.
For the Water Committee of the Council, is it are the notes shared so that we would be able to see the status of the grant and communications that are happening?
Not me, other
We don't take minutes.
Yeah.
No, okay.
Yeah, let's just remember.
So there's no minutes for the Water Committee?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And for the meetings that you held last year for the water issue are, I think there were two in July. Are they both on the website? Because I was I think when David, when you made the presentation of the initially of the consultant's report, is that meeting on the website?
So I'll say that every meeting of council since February, if not January of twenty twenty four, I can bear, is on our YouTube.
Okay, oh, on the YouTube.
Yeah, and and we, you know, what I will double check, though, is, I mean, we also try to usually have the slide deck on there where you can download.
Yeah, I think I can find that, but I wasn't sure if which there were a lot of, there was a lot of public comment in the early initial meeting, and I think there were a lot of experts from the community who have some expertise as well and were interested in the water issue. And I think it's important to keep people involved who can contribute to the solution for the alternative, which is to change in the water system.
And particular experts, you mentioned this a lot, but
Well, I think it's good to go back and see who they were and keep them in the loop.
Fine. Okay, but you you keep talking about experts in the community. I just haven't, nobody seems to identify them.
I think a lot of water systems, municipalities who maintain their own water system rely on experts within the community.
I know, but I'm actually asking you specifically because I, this comes up a lot, and I just, I don't see people materializing here with that.
How do you, I mean, like, how
When I come here and speak, and I'll say this, David and I, Doug and I will literally meet with anyone, you know, and I and I, this doesn't, I'm not going to ask you now, but literally if there's someone particular, either the phone number or email, send it to me. I will meet with them, you know, and I continue to do that. Some people come. But I, again, if there's somebody you have in particular mind, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to engage.
Yeah, anyone can come to any of our public outreach meetings and ask questions and speak. There's, there are no limitations on that. That's why
But I'll I'll extend it that, you know, some people may not be comfortable in the public setting. Every other Wednesday, I'm upstairs. Every second Saturday, email, you know, again, there's, and it's, and I'll leave it to you, you know, I don't know if we've seen anyone else for us to contact, but if you have someone in particular in mind, and it doesn't have to be live, feel free, and we'll, you know, we'll try to engage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else in person come up to the front? If you're on the online, as my mother might say, push the raised hand button. It will recognize you. Not seeing any online, or anyone else coming up front, I will seek a motion to close the first of many public comment opportunities. Here it goes. Second from Anthony, first from David. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item ten. I'm just looking at it. Can we take this as one motion there? Or no, okay.
Well, you just can't, Mr. Fuller and Ms. Weaver cannot vote. But you could do it if one of those two are voted.
Well, Krista, I don't think Krista came back, so, but yeah. Well, let's do, I mean, how about I'll take a motion for June fifth and July eighth. I believe everyone can vote on those.
No, Ms. Lee, oh, Ms. Weaver.
Yes, oh, everyone. So someone's moved the fifth and the July eighth. I'll take that motion.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll take a motion of people who are not Anthony for June twenty third and June thirtieth minutes. Second, all right, David, all in favor?
Aye.
All abstained?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Next, and again, with apologies for me confusing everyone before about the ordinance. So now we've got public hearings. The first one is ordinance nine hundred, which is our, I'll just say, updated, and that this is our second go-around of it, grease trap maintenance ordinance. Reggie, could you read by title?
An ordinance to the Borough of Hopewell County Mercer, New Jersey, regarding borough sanitary sewer system and grease traps specifically, limiting chapter seventeen of the advised general ordinances of the Borough of Hopewell nineteen seventy five.
As far as explanation goes, we had identified an issue with sewer backups from restaurant greets and and at times lack of maintenance or oversight and maintenance of these traps that caused some backups and some some damage. Doug and our health department and our health liaison and some other members of council worked on an ordinance, ended up engaging with the business community on a a total kind of rewrite of it. And we kind of landed on a on a plan that will also have a component that will be on a resolution where we will be hiring an outside consultant. Where essentially the borough arranged a reasonable price to have inspections done of the grease traps at our costs. But if there is a I guess a violation or if it fails, then the cost shifts for the second and so have been re-inspections to the restaurants. There was a lot of concern about, you know, who would do it, what the cost would be. And a lot of work, thanks to Doug, Anthony, Cherry, David, probably everyone, but apologies if I've been missed. But, you know, talking to our restaurants about what the best solution was that worked for everyone, and I'm I'm really happy to see what everyone's work was on that and the members of our restaurant community who engaged us on on that. With that, I'll open the meeting to the the public for comments or public hearing on this one. Send that also to those online, push the raised hand button. I am not seeing either, so I will look for a motion to close this portion of the meeting for the moment.
David.
Yeah, no, good.
Deb, and then David is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I will look for a motion to adopt ordinance nine hundred. I move. Anthony, thank you. I'm excited. Second, let me do the roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hough? Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Lennys?
Yes.
Everyone, for all the harbor from that in particular. That's where you tend to take these out of order, but ordinance nine oh two, second reading public question. Reggie, can you read my title?
An ordinance to the Borough of Hopewell authorizing submission of a ballot question to the Mercer County Clerk for the next succeeding general election as the settlement of the borough's water system to New Jersey American Water Bank.
So this is the ordinance that would allow us to put a yes-no question on the ballot in November with a admittedly much shorter interpretive statement. The original ordinance that we advanced, we spoke with our county clerk and it was just too long for the ballot, so went back to the drawing boards to simplify and shorten it quite a bit. So the version that's on the website is nine oh two is is what this is the one. Correct. And while we have our next item thirteen is on the original ordinance, should this one advance, I'll be asking for a motion to table indefinitely or torpedo that earlier ordinance. Also, that will open up the meeting to the public for questions or comments on ordinance nine oh two. Seeing in person, anyone online, raise your hand. Seeing none there, I will look for a motion to close the meeting to the public. So I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I will for a motion to adopt ordinance nine oh two. I'd like to move it. David, thank you. I'm second.
Hi.
I'm hiding. Thank you so much. I'm rolling.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler? Ms. Lennys?
Yes.
All right. Next, in lieu of a public hearing or seeking a motion to approve ordinance nine oh one, I would seek a motion to, will be determined to be table indefinitely and essentially table ordinance nine oh one, which was the much longer and unacceptable to the clerk. We just want to hold it back.
I'll move it.
So, so that's the correct procedure, to just table forever?
That's, that's what the agenda says, and I believe we had asked for some help on that.
Well, you wouldn't, you don't want to open, I mean.
Yeah, we don't open the public, just what is the verbiage to?
Basically, it's a public joke, right, so it's just
We can't, yes, because we're not opening for a public
Exactly.
So we're moving it permanently from the possibility of adoption.
And you're not moving to open it for a public hearing. So if you don't have a public hearing, you can't, you can't vote it up or down.
You can't, yeah.
Okay, so we're just moving to table it.
We're not, I guess, the 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 way the motion reads here is table indefinitely.
It will definitely.
But I I would add to that and and permanently kill it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really, that's
Very, very true.
I have to read it off, yeah. So I have the motion for that.
I do, too.
Okay, Deb, but I'm second.
Sure.
David, second. Let's do the roll call then on
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Lennys?
Yes.
And just my thanks to everyone that worked on this ballot question and the interpretive statement. You would think it was a simple thing when you look at it, but the process of getting there was really, really big deal, and it required a lot of brains and a lot of input, a lot of effort for it.
The law doesn't, has not created a simple process either, so it's it's just the way it's set up.
So, but it was, it was a really an excellent team effort and sustained till we got it right.
So I hope there's lots of opportunities from lots of different sources for people to educate themselves about this question. They're all very concerned with, no one heard anything or read anything on Mercer Me or Hopewell Valley News is on 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 Zoom as well. No one read anything, you know, that, how would they know if they didn't have something to read? I think we came to a nice length of working with the county clerk to something that is reasonable, you know, tells the entire story on a complicated issue, but without
Without a jump out.
That's So our consent agenda, couple, couple of quick comments. Reggie, I'll maybe just ask, are we still, I was expecting a lot of, I know last year was a lot of waiting from the county before we could finalize our our tax bills. Are we, are we thinking we're likely to need a big grace period?
No, I've got the numbers today.
Oh, good.
So hopefully I'll get them out tomorrow. It's on out next week.
Okay, well, either way, we'll we'll be prepared, but sometimes we prepare a budget well in advance and know what our portion is, but we need the school districts' information and the counties', and last year was a particularly tough year for the county getting their numbers to us. So as an administrative item, we allow ourselves an extension, you know, normally the bills are due August first with a ten-day extension. We have to take action if we're going to extend that, because if we can't get you bills in time to pay them in ten days, it's really not fair. So that, we'll do that. We've got a grant application for road projects on North Seminary, First Street and Second Street, as well as payments for the work on Hart Avenue. We mentioned before the grease trap maintenance contract, so we we now done our new and improved grease trap maintenance program. And this resolution will allow us to enter a contract with the contractor who we will have do the inspections for us and a couple of library cleanup items, new salaries and a transfer of funds to simplify how they do their plans. I know that was a long time coming from
Yeah, I was going to say, library is very grateful that we're finally getting the money, and then Doug's worked very hard on getting this in order, along with my hands. I appreciate everybody's order on that, work on that.
Yeah, so with that, unless anyone has one they'd like to pull out for separate voter discussion, I'll take a motion to approve resolutions twenty twenty five eighty-four through ninety-one.
I can do it.
All right, Deb, do I have a second?
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Lennys?
Yes.
Next, I'm going to be the updated billist. When we are here, take a motion to approve our claims for payment.
I'm watching.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Anthony.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Lennys?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we'll do our council liaison reports. Anthony, I feel like I get in the habit of starting with you and the qualities we've been talking about that offline. It made me correct my my ways.
My, my tradition for start.
First name alphabetically.
Okay. Bye, good day.
Okay, I know, so.
So, so because the board of health did not meet in June, the next meeting is on thirty July. Also, quick updates from Gary Josie. So he's published results of the immunization audit of school and daycare facilities. It's a hundred percent compliance for two thousand twenty four and five in Hopewell Borough. Last time I mentioned about the scheduled vaccination services. Just a reminder that the Blue Vaccine Clinic comes to Hopewell Borough on November fourth, here at Borough Hall. Also been asked to remind everyone that homebound vaccination services are available to Hopewell Valley residents. And then finally, there were so we got some additional stats in this month's health report, which we haven't had previously. And so one thing, for example, we had sick health inspections at food facilities in the month of June, all was satisfactory, and I've been nineteen so far this year. That's the health update.
Yeah, thank you. How do you feel?
Um, sure. Open space did not meet, so there is nothing reported there. The Borough Green Team is proud to announce that we have collected over a thousand pounds of Trax plastic. So we will be getting a bench. So I'll, I'll talk to Doug and it's a matter of where, you know, where we get it delivered to. We will be looking for more volunteers to, to continue collecting beyond December. I feel like we're really going to need some more folks from the community to join us because we're really going to burn out our plastic sorting volunteers. So that is something we're just always looking for folks to join the Green Team. We did have a successful composting workshop at the Mercer County Master Gardeners earlier this month. It had to be rescheduled, but it was very, it was well attended. I went myself. I learned about composting, which I could really use the education. And part of that workshop was we had some twenty-five-dollar coupons that are good at one of three local merchants for buying sustainable garden supplies. We still have ten of those coupons. They are from one hundred percent funded by our P S E and G grant through Sustainable New Jersey. And so the merchants get a hundred percent of the proceeds and the grant pays for them completely. We still have ten of them left. We are going to be at the farmers market this Sunday collecting hard-to-recycle items. And if you live in Hopewell Borough and you bring us a picture, bring your phone of your nice, sustainable garden. of your nice sustainable garden, it can be just a few plants, it can be your beautiful yard. Share your picture. The first ten residents who share their picture get a twenty five dollar coupon to go spend at one of three local merchants. We have my backyard at Nektars, Rosedale Town and Country, and Stony Brook Gardens participating. Um, and I think that is it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, and I'm reminding myself, Saturday, you guys are going to be on Sunday.
Yes, Sunday, yes, I'm going to get your tent.
The tent.
I guess I'm get the tent from my.
The Borough has a, you know, for our for outreach events, like the Harvest Fair, and and we have a nice branded tent, and so for us out of the community and a big, big red.
That was the question behind it. What what do you mean by hard to recycle?
Oh, so are hard to recycle items that we collect in addition to the plastic, which we always collect upstairs? We collect usable art supplies for home front. We collect cell phones and small elect, other small electronics for recycling, brittle water filters, any empty or used dental care products, single use razors, wine bottle corks, button cell batteries, used tennis cells, tennis balls and baseballs. You don't have to memorize that list. It is on the Hopewell Valley Green Team website. Um, and it is collected. We alternate the Pennington and Hopewell Farmers Markets. We have residents at each once a month for everyone.
Me?
Yeah.
Um, the recreation committee has not met recently, but we do have some upcoming concerts this Saturday in Gezibo Park. We've got a jazz band starting in the evening, and the fire department will be out, you know, supplying their usual food and drinks for people to enjoy. The Blower Band is playing both on the fourteenth and the twenty eighth of this month. Um, the library does not have any meetings, library board has no meetings set up until September, but the new teen program that they implemented is going really well. Barbara, our amazing librarian, has all kinds of different events that she posts for tweens and young teens, which is a first for our borough, so we're very excited. That's taking off, and we're still looking at trying to find a space, like a safe hang space for teens, which will be great if that happens. And the building committee is probably going to be on Doug's report, you know, we haven't really met, but we're working on T P W plans and personnel, we're going to know what's going on with that, so that's it.
Good. Um, we're hearing from the July thirty first outreach meeting, more analysis, graphs, and so on, and the whole team is, I mean, we're and everybody's contributing to it. Our lead service line replacement plan update is due on August thirty first. Our lead service line replacement inventory and progress that they were due on August tenth, they normally do in July, but the D E P puts that in off by a month because they have some new recording system that wasn't working properly, so which is good, so you got a little more wiggle room. Um, and and I'm the one who wrote the original replacement plan, which is such a thrill. Anyway, working on that. Leak monitoring, we found a residential service line leak. It wasn't massive, but it was significant. There was on West Broad Street, which was repaired recently, so yeah, it was more being mitigated, which is always good. And also, working on, and Sherry and I have been working on this, a kind of a side by side compendium on water sale. It's kind of an F A Q, but some people have asked in the community who said it would be nice to have a kind of a side by side format, where it's like if we keep the system, here's what happens. If we solve the system, here's what happens, and a list of issues and how those are affected, and things. So we're trying to come up with something that's you know, relatively concise, that kind of leads people through that information. Now, obviously, there are other resources on the website for them, but this is kind of shorter form, so that's been an ongoing project. Uh, and that's, I got nobody who are meeting this month.
Yeah, so. In. So now I'll 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 be brief. I think it's polling is possible that the, I'll see if there's a planning board meeting in in August to to take off for people's to to get a call, but we'll keep an eye on the website. I don't believe there's any actual application. There's a few historic preservation approvals that are that are appended. But no actual planning board applications in in the queue for for August. Earlier tonight, I had a swearing in Steve Webb. He is our Borough O E M Coordinator, a recently retired EMS professional, a longtime volunteer, an local fire and EMS, all around a great resident. Just thanks again to him for volunteering and that for us. My next office hours will be the Saturday at nine. I'd say we can prepare to drink coffee, but no one ever does, and not a not a sip. Um, it's not a popular.
Thank you for bringing it, I.
Yeah, well. You gotta keep the economy, you know. Uh, but you know, again, check the website with something that we we do Saturdays once a month and uh, every other Wednesday. So it was this week, given in two weeks as well as as drop-ins. Well, this will be our lot of other meetings, but I also wanted to extend my just absolutely sincere thanks, gratitude to Doug Walker, our administrator for the work he's done over the last eighteen months, so it seems like ten years, what what he's accomplished for our town. Um, it really is amazing. It's it's, you know, everything from big picture things to things that I'm fortunate and fall asleep talking about, because it's not interesting to the public, but things that need to be done. Um, and just being all around a great guy, well, doing it, and just a pleasure to to work with. Um, we'll have plenty of other opportunities in the next month to say that again, but since this is our last forum meeting, I wanted to 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 get that out.
Are you going to be in the meeting on the thirty first?
Yes.
Excellent.
My last day.
That is, oh my gosh.
Be late.
The last day.
Yeah, hang up until the last.
Like that's better, right?
How appropriate.
Yeah, I, yeah, well, I just, I mean, we'll see you before then, but I mean, yeah. And 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 that's wonderful, actually. It was good to see you.
And I guess just a congratulations to the, you had a nice crop of graduated seniors here in Hopewell Borough. So great job for our high school in getting out the door and onto the next thing in life. We've got a great school system and and community. Um, we created some some excellent, excellent kids and and young adults who are going to be doing doing great things. The school district and municipalities continue to meet and discuss our collective financial vision for all of our futures. I don't have anything particular to report other than we do keep in regular contact, and my hope is that our three municipalities and school district can soon be all on the same page about the best way to to fund our our schools.
Here, here.
So with that, I'll pitch over to to Doug for anything else to highlight from his administrator's report.
So I just want to say, administrator's report is it's it's really a team report, okay? So it's holding toys, all our professionals, and of course, mayor, council, all working to get the stuff done, but I get to put it on my report, which is great. So, um, working with our professionals, our goal is to have a ordinance to introduce at the August seventh meeting to to initiate the funding for the public works projects. So we're putting that together. We got some final numbers, and what that all allows us to do, we don't have to issue the debt. We just need to authorize the debt, and then what we can do is that'll give us the ability to get Ronnie to finish the architecturals and and not to finish the engineering, and we take that out of the A R P money that we receive. So we want to make sure you use that money before we lose it, so. So it it serves a couple purposes in getting that adopted, and we'll introduce it in at the August meeting. Just a year to date status on the budget overall, and where we need to be, so we're in good shape there.
And water budgets.
We're still water current fund and current fund and water utility fund.
Yes, yeah, we're we're on target. We're fine, right?
Deborah mentioned we did, we put in place the new accounting processes. Diane worked very hard on that, so we got that going, and Lisa was involved in that as well. Uh, David mentioned we have the consultant from J P M working with David from the water, and basically what he what he's, what we've asked him, charged him with is to assist Dave in building a dashboard for the reports that are required, and not just a dashboard that says, this report is due every three months, but it is actually specific to the borough, so Dave can look and say, oh, my report is due in July. Another town might be lucky.
Yeah, all our D E P milestones, we got to get this settled done by this date, we got it reported by this day, and then everything is.
We're we're using him to build that dashboard, which is.
Wonderful. So that was just keeping track of all those moving parts.
Yeah, we have, we have so many testing reports that we have to do and filings and everything. It's really good. It's really.
Well, it's it seems like there's more by the day.
Yeah, it's just, it's very difficult, so. Uh, the railroad station exterior restoration is moving forward. They hope to be on the second floor next week, and we're looking for probably end of August, whether, you know, it's very weather dependent, obviously. Uh, but hopefully the end of August will be will be done with that.
Looks really good, so thank you.
Yeah, they're doing a nice job. They're they're a good contractor. They really are. We talked about the public works facility already for funding. Uh, we finished, we we finally were able to finish the stormwater planning for that project, and that kind of drilled the cost of the project up to make sure that we were complying. We didn't give ourselves any passes or what's the word I'm looking for, Lisa? You know, we can.
We didn't exempt.
We can exempt ourselves, thank you. We didn't take any exemptions, so. Uh, Hard Avenue is complete. We took the cores. It's an N J D O T job, so we have the core to make sure that the contractor did the compaction properly. Uh, we received close to five hundred thousand dollars already from the D O T for the project. So you get seventy five percent upfront when you start the work and then twenty five percent when you complete, so. As soon as we get it closed out, we'll apply for the for the other twenty five percent, and we'll be good to go. Um, also on the public works building, we want the extra step. We have those very large trees along the one side. We broke Bartlett in to take a look at the trees and develop a plan for us that we could save those trees, so.
That's awesome.
That's part of it. That's part of the, you know, the extra steps that the borough's taking to make sure that it's a good project. Eaton Place, Eggie, and North Lanning, we're looking to go out to bid for that in July, probably be end of August, September project, but we'll be able to get that done this year, and we expect that to be almost fully funded by the ground. As the mayor said, we're going out for a new D O T railroad ad. That was that was a twenty twenty one project, but we were able to close it out, and I will expect the funds, the twenty five percent that I had mentioned before. Uh, expect to get that soon. The borough first, we got the fire escape inspected at the library. They they're supposed to be inspected every five years, but I spoke to Alan and
Never.
Yes, it never happened. So now.
Passed on now.
So now we're compliant. We're all set to go. We got the library gutters cleaned, and we're also putting in place a um, spring and fall gutter cleaning at the library to try to help that problem out.
Do we still have that leak pending too, or is that?
For the gutter.
Keep our radar for the library yet?
Yeah, it looks like we're going to have to replace it. It probably costs more to try to repair it, copper gutter than leader, than than replace it.
Thank you though for the rest too.
So we had the basement flooding. You recall that happened. We did kind of a homemade approach. We put the sandbags there and everything, and it's still even today, proof of the big downpour we had, it's working, but uh, we we really need the watershed to come back and help us and put those back in.
So is that curb itself, is that our property or the bank's property?
It's it's our property, but the they were removed by.
Well, I know, but just if if it just gets to a point where we have to do something, can we just replace that section of curb?
Yeah, I guess I guess we could, yeah. We can bring somebody in.
You know, just a thought. I mean, I.
Just kind of like we should.
Because it did, how long since you originally made that request? Over a year?
Over a year, yeah.
Yeah.
So, next time we have somebody in for some curb work, we'll see if they can run over and do that, okay?
It's the water.
I think that every time. And then, you know, we had that, we we were able to get pole on the corner of Broad and Princeton. We were to get that finally removed. Uh, we have contractors coming tomorrow, because we had that little section there that was brick, okay? But what happens is the trucks are now over it now, totally over it, now that the pole's gone. And that was the pole, excuse me, that was the pole they used to run into all the time, utility pole, so. We're having a contractor come tomorrow and just going to float it with concrete, put a little reinforcement in there, put about six, six inches of concrete, so even if they drive over it, it'll be fine.
Which one is it?
Princeton and Broad, where we took the pole out. They were all, yeah, like bricks are have it.
Yeah.
So removes the trip hazard, and the bricks would never last with with the trucks driving over, so. So that'll be done tomorrow. We got a cleaning contract in place for both the railroad station and the Borough Hall, so they started. That's a nice, that's a little nice stuff. Great, right, Reggie?
Huge upgrade.
And the train station too, right?
Train station as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we had, we we keep up with our ma- maintenance, so the H V A system here at the borough is all portal filters and everything we change, so we're up to date. Uh, Elizabeth Town Gas is winding down. They have probably maybe another two, three weeks. But they've been in town a long time, Seventeen Streets, and now they're doing all the all the individual connections, service lines to the homes, and they're doing that. They're they're being very considerate. They're doing it by appointment, which is great, so. But that necessitates them jumping all over, and so they'll be winding up soon.
And when will they come back to pave everything?
Probably late fall.
Okay.
Yeah, they want to have a chance for it to settle, and they'll come back and pave it. They did a nice job on the other roads that they did. They did a very good job. And as as they did one lane on Taylor Terrace, because that's all I really did in the road, it was so old, it was beyond moratorium. So what we're doing is, with the next road job we're doing, we're putting that in as an alternate to have them do the other way on Taylor Terrace, and so if the bids are good, we'll bang that out and that'll be done, so. Get another road for us completed. Uh, let's see. I know I'm taking a lot of time.
No, there was.
No, you've got a lot.
Yeah. Our pilot's moving forward. The negotiation issues, I think, are going very well. Um, so I have something to report on that real soon. I have some safety issues we're working on for personnel, finishing up the department head appraisals. It's been a long time since they actually had appraisals, so. We leave that on, and that's it.
The Borough Hall repairs is still weather dependent, right?
Yes, and I I know Ronnie, we're contracted to us, and he had to get some business registrations and things lined up, so I I have a call in to her to see what the status is on that, but I haven't heard back.
I have one, um, quick, I guess, curb question. I had some residents ask, I think assuming that like the Belgium block curbs are like a luxury, more expensive item than than concrete. I know you did some wizardry with these bids and ended up being less expensive than.
It was comparable.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I mean, there's an exception that we're kind of spending extra money on 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 something that actually turns out to be maybe more durable, but.
Definitely.
Definitely.
Yeah, definitely more durable, and if you have a damaged section.
You can, you can piece it up.
It held up on the quarter across from Champions with those, the long yard tracks for running over every day, and that's.
Very sad, yeah, that's a very good.
Yeah, we're not, we're not blowing the budget.
Now, that's that's, I just thought, get that out there, because it's it's a nice to have, but it surprised me with the price of concrete, whatever, it ends up not being more expensive.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. And 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 just thank you for that and and everything in that list.
And Doug, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Please thank you.
All right. Now, we'll open up the meeting to our second public comment section. If you're in person, if you're in front, you're online, push the raise hand button. Not seeing any, I'll take a motion to close our second public comment section. So I move, I'm second. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, we started our meeting with an executive session with some personnel interviews that we reserved at the end to to rejoin that. If we needed more discussion, we determined we don't, so I'm I'm gonna skip over items nineteen and twenty and twenty one. We're not going to reenter after session, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. Uh, Deb and Heidi, second. All in favor?
All right.